Good afternoon. It is 4:30 PM on Tuesday, June 7, 2022. We will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. Item number one is a public meeting notice to conduct the meeting by interactive technology. I believe we are to receive the order filed.
I'll offer a motion to approve to accept the interactive technology for this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. With that, we welcome Councillor Schultz remotely to the meeting, joining us via Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, consent agenda, 2.1. Councillors, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion is carried. Item number 3.1, public hearing on the reassessment of unpaid Lakeside Village 2005 special assessments.
Madam President, City Councillors, the purpose of this public hearing this evening is for the reassessment of the 2005 assessments from Lakeside Village Edition. As outlined within the council packet, you can see the lots in which this is applying to, and this is triggered by lot sales by the county for these lots out in Lakeside Village Edition. It'd be my recommendation at this time that we open the public hearing for public comment.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would care to be heard? If there's nothing more, there is a resolution.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing and adopting the final assessment rolls for the Lakeside Village Edition 2005 improvements payable over a 10-year period, along with a 5.5% simple interest charged on the unpaid balance.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any additional discussion? Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes.
And Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Item number 4.1, temporary on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license for Cathedral of the Holy Trinity.
I'll motion to approve the issuance of a temporary on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license for Cathedral of the Holy Trinity to sell alcohol during a church festival at 605 North State Street and 6th North Street on Sunday, June 26, 2022, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 4.2, lawful gambling permit also for the Cathedral of Holy Trinity.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of lawful gambling permit for Cathedral of Holy Trinity to conduct bingo, pull tabs, and raffle gambling at Cathedral of Holy Trinity at 605 North State Street on Sunday, June 26, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 4.3, liquor license and permit renewals for 2022, 2023.
I'll motion to approve the issuance of the following annual liquor licenses and permits for a period beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements. Would you like them read into the record? Or?
I don't think you.
Okay.
No, yeah.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 4.4, transfer mechanical amusement device license.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of a mechanical amusement license from Concordia Lanes Inc. to Krugel LLC doing businesses Concordia Lanes at 416 19th Street North for the period beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Yes. What's an example of a mechanical amusement device?
Bowling alley.
Bowling alley.
Well, no, like a arcade game or...
Arcade, pinball.
Pool table.
Pool table. Things you don't do anymore, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 4.5, transfer on-sale intoxicating Sunday liquor licenses.
I'll offer a motion to approve the transfer of on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses from Concordia Lanes Incorporated to Kruger LLC doing business as Concordia Lanes at 416 19th Street North, includes the volleyball courts, deck, and smoking hunt for the periods beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I just want to add the comment that it's nice to see that this business is going to stay locally within our community.
Agreed.
I would agree. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, sorry. That motion is carried. Item number 4.6, general license renewals for 2022, 2023.
I'll motion to approve the issuance of the following renewals of general licenses for the period beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements, and those are tobacco, fireworks, kennels, mechanical amusement, sheep, solid waste, taxi cab, and tree service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I will just make a note that I did receive a call from someone specifically in regards to the tree service that wanted me to, I guess, just kind of talk about with tree services, you know, and the listings that are on here for tobacco, fireworks, kennels, sheep. Just a reminder to the community that the licensed service providers are available here. So that is a good point of reference if you're looking to leverage one of these services. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 5.1, interim use permit for 326 Center Street.
Good evening, Council President, Councillors. John Nysley, Planner with the City of New Ulm. The proposed action here is to offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving the interim use permit application by James Sowers and Dean Berdorff to allow the operation of a retail record and vintage toy store with conditions in an I-2 general industrial zoning district for the location and size described in their interim use permit application on the property legally described as Lot 1, Block 217, Park Edition, with street address of 326 Center Street. The Planning Commission at its May 26, 2022, meeting voted in favor of recommending the approval of the interim use permit application with conditions. The item was approved, six members in favor and one member not in favor of approving the interim use permit. A little bit of an overview, the applicant is proposing to operate a retail record store and vintage toy store in a 32-foot by 43-foot room on the north end of the building on the street level floor on North German Street. On the lower level of the building, the applicant is repairing his own personal vehicles, and the applicant's use of the property for repairing his own personal vehicles would be classified as auto repair minor, which is a permitted use in the I-2 zoning district. As a little background, the Planning Commission at its April 28, 2022, meeting, and the City Council at its May 3, 2022, meeting recommended denial of the applicant's conditional use permit for the same use on the same property, and then recommended that the applicant apply for an interim use permit, and that is just what the applicant did. Attached with this action here is the staff report to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission also has this new process where we do a findings of fact form, which basically goes through the questions and justification for either approving or denying a permit that goes in front of the Planning Commission. Staff's evaluation of the project is that the application does comply with the standards for granting an interim use permit. A retail record and vintage toy store would generally be less intensive a use than most I-2 permitted land uses. The granting of an interim use permit does not permanently grant the use on the property, rather it's for a specific period of time, and the applicant is not proposing to permanently change the space as to not make it usable for I-2 purposes in the future. The business would be compatible and would not adversely impact other industrial land uses in the area. Off-street parking is provided for the use on the property, and then there is also a public parking lot and street parking located within 100 feet of the proposed use. There is no anticipated odor, noise, or site pollution to be generated from the use, and then there are other commercial land uses to the north, east, and south. There were seven recommended conditions by the Planning Commission. One was the use shall comply with the standards found in Section 2.4E of the zoning ordinance. Number two was the interim use permit shall be in effect for a period of five years, meaning that it shall expire on the date that is five years after the date of approval. Three, customer parking will take place on hard surface locations on the applicant's property. Four, the size of the use will not expand nor be moved from the location identified in the application. Five, the retail business operation shall not take place after 9:00 PM daily. Six, the applicant shall level the steps that enter the retail space and install a handrail that meets the state building code standards. And then seven, the applicant or property owner will pay the cost to record the consent agreement and interim use permit with Brown County Recorder's Office. I should note, we were contacted by the applicant today. He did level the steps in the process of getting the handrail up to those standards. In fact, maybe he's already done that. I would also note, there was one neighboring property who is not in favor of this proposed permit, and they did voice their concerns at the Planning Commission meeting. That would conclude the staff report.
One question on item number six. That makes it ADA assessable? No.
No. Councillor Christian, I brought it up in the Planning Commission meeting as to why this building wouldn't have to be brought up to code like any other building, and there's no other significant renovations that's going to warrant to put in a handicap ramp into this building. I asked at the Planning Commission that they could at least level the steps and put a handrail on there and put that as one of the conditions if we were going to pursue this for an interim permit.
Is ADA compliance C a requirement for this interim use permit?
That was Zabel, building official. Council President, Councillors, there's no permit pulled on for any remodeling or anything for this building, so there's nothing.
New code change of use wouldn't kick it in.
Well, he's not doing any...
I mean, the change of use, the occupancy.
But they have to pull a permit for me to enforce the ADA code. There's no permit pulled.
And I'm all right with it.
Not stating that somebody federal coming in and doing it like they were going around years ago, but as for our requirement, no.
And one of the other concerns I had was with, and I was the one that voted no on it, was for five years, I was, you know, in favor of two years. The rest of commissioners thought five years. I'm just concerned about the future of the other neighboring property and development and if in those capacities. But, and originally, Mr. Sowers had said he wanted to try this business for a couple of years, see if it worked, and that's why I proposed two years at the Planning Commission.
Councillor Mack, what are your concerns?
Until we know the future of, say, the property to the north and capacities, and say if they come to vacate the alley to the north of that property, and then accessibility to this property, the property to the east, you know, they express concerns about that they own up to the building and having to put a fence up, express concerns of food safety and their standards for their business, and they express concerns of their expansion, possibly things, and traffic needs, so.
What, Mr. Nysley, can you expand on what other types of businesses would be considered I-2 and would be potential tenants of that space?
So our I-2 zoning district, our general industrial zoning district, we would consider our most heavy industrial users. So that could be anything from running a scrap iron steel yard to doing things like crushing concrete, but it does account for things that, things that can be industrial in nature and might have a lot of semi-traffic or things like that surrounding it.
I do have a question on number three. Customer parking will take place on hard surface locations on the applicant's property. So is that stating that if there is a customer for that business, that they're not allowed to use the on-street parking that's available, only the surface locations on the applicant's property?
If I could just real quickly, Dave Schnobr, Community Development Director, go back to the previous question that you had. Also, in this particular zoning district, we allow all of the uses found in the I-1 and the I-3 district. So this is a district that basically allows all of our industrial uses.
Thank you, Mr. Schnobr.
And staff is okay with going out at five years? I do remember that last conversation a couple of years. I mean, you're comfortable with that?
That, we were comfortable with that timeline. If the applicant doesn't meet the conditions that are recommended here or would be tied to this permit, you know, that permit could also be pulled. And it also doesn't, doesn't really preclude the applicant from they decide there's a better location, or if they decide to go somewhere where there's maybe more vehicle traffic driving up and down the street, they could, they could step out of this and, and not have to be at this site for those, for those five years.
So a period for up to five years?
For up to five years.
Thank you.
And at two years, he could come back and reapply for another interim permit, you know, on those capacities. You know, it's kind of spot zoning, and, you know, it's the only for retail and capacities. I know he's trying to make use of his building.
It's, it's not spot zoning, just as clarification, because we're not rezoning the property.
And again, this is an interim use permit. Mr. Berdorff, did you want to say anything? Joe Sowers, sorry. Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. James Sowers, 214 East Sandmore Street, Springfield. The parking thing gets brought up quite a bit, and I guess just from my perspective and everybody we've talked to, because there's a lot of walkers and bicyclists and stuff like that, and I don't mean to make a joke out of it, but I'd hope no one would get hit by a semi doing five miles an hour. The thing with the property is there's AA next door. We talked to all them people, and they have meetings like, I think, three times a week, they said, and they have like 15 people there sometimes in a building that's half the size of ours, and they never have a problem with parking. And Ben at the furniture store at New Ulm Furniture, which I've done business with for a long time, said he never had problems. And like, again, it's not like a testing lab, so like, I don't, I don't see how we'd be any more of a threat to AMPI and their fencing than MBTL was for how many years. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sowers. And so right now, the recommended conditions, essentially, if the steps have been leveled and a handrail is being installed, are being met for, for the application and the, the use of this interim use permit, correct?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
We would have to still record the consent agreement.
Okay.
And the interim use permit with the brown recorder's office.
Thank you.
Being, being, we denied the last request, and we told him to come back with the interim use permit. I guess I'm going to go along with it. I mean, he has to meet all seven conditions. I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approve the interim use permit application of James Sowers and Dean Berdorff to allow the operation of a retail record and vintage store with the conditions in an I-2 general industrial zoning district for the location and size described in the interim use application on the property legally described as Lot 1, Block 217, Park Edition, with a street address of 326 Center Street.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
You're all comfortable with five years on that versus, you know?
If the Planning Commission approved it six to one, and that is their recommendation, I'm comfortable with it. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
No.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes.
And Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Item number 5.2, variance request for 1314 8th North Street, Oak Hills Living Center.
Right, Council President, Councillors, this is a variance request by Dwayne Helwig of Community Living Solutions and Candace Chuvier on behalf of Oak Hills Living Center to allow, one, a vehicle driving lane within zero feet of the front property line, and two, to allow off-street parking spaces to be located within the front yard setback area as depicted in the site plan provided with the variance application on property legally described as Lot 1 and Lot 2, Block 1, Oak Hills First Edition. The Planning Commission at its May 26, 2022, meeting recommended approval of the variance request with conditions on a six to zero vote. One commission member abstained from the vote as they had ties to the organization. Oak Hills is proposing to construct a two-story, eight-unit assisted living addition, and a two-story, 30-bed assisted living dementia care and long-term care addition. This property is located along 8th North Street and west of Garden Street. 8th North Street going west ends as it meets the steep grade going to the west. There are no plans to develop 8th North Street to the west to intersect with Bishop Lecker Lane on top of the hill. The remaining undeveloped part of Oak Hills property is largely a steep hillside to the west, and the applicant states that this isn't feasible for additional parking. Oak Hills is proposing to install an additional driving lane and parking on the south side of the proposed addition abutting 8th North Street. The driving lane would encroach five feet into the 8th North Street right-of-way, and the right-of-way encroachment would be addressed with a license agreement, would be brought here to the City Council. Section 10.7J7N of the zoning ordinance requires that all off-street parking and driving areas be located no closer than 30 feet from the front property line in the R4 zoning district. Therefore, they're requesting a variance to go zero feet from that front property line. The applicant is proposing to install 16 off-street parking stalls and four handicap-accessible parking stalls as part of the expansion project. The proposed new parking stalls will be located approximately 20 feet from the front property line and will encroach into the front yard setback area 10 feet. There were two, two conditions recommended with this application. One is that the applicant shall contact the city once survey stakes have been set for the placement of the driving lane and parking stalls within the setback area, and then two, the applicant shall pay the cost to record the variance with the Brown County Recorder's Office, and that would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nysley.
John, does this extra parking necessitate any sort of runoff pond or anything like that?
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, they, as part of this project, they are doing some small retention facilities on site, some rain garden type improvements.
And from the Planning Commission, it was a six-zero. We discussed it and got educated on the side yard setback and everything, and nobody had any issues with it. So with that being, I'll offer a motion to approve the variance request with conditions, Dwayne Helwig of Community Living Solutions and Candace Scholiver on behalf of Oak Hills Living Center to allow a vehicle driving lane within zero feet to the front property line and allow off-street parking spaces to be located within the front yard setback area as depicted in the site plan provided with the variance application and properly legally described as Lot 1, Lot 2, Block 1, Oak Hills First Edition.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 5.3, a variance request for 425 North State Street. Al and Matt Kapitschke.
All right. This is a variance request by Yakka LLC doing business as Smiley's Tavern on behalf of Al and Matt Kapitschke to allow the construction of an 18-foot wide by 34-foot long covered patio, one feet, one foot from the side property line, as described in the plan provided with the variance application on property legally described as Lot 7, Block 110 north of Center Street with a street address of 425 North State Street. The Planning Commission at its May 26, 2022, meeting unanimously recommended approval of the variance with conditions. For a little bit of background on this, the bar is considered a legal non-conforming use in the R2 zoning district. The bar was actually constructed in 1900. The applicant is proposing to construct this patio on the southwest corner of the building and then have it going to the west. There was an existing building that was removed in 2020, and the proposed patio to be constructed would be constructed in the same approximate location. The building that was removed was 14 feet by 20 feet long and ran in that same orientation. The existing building and bar is located approximately one foot off the side property line. The patio proposed is proposed to be in line with the existing building. The required setback for the proposed patio is 20 feet. Now, that 20-foot setback is because this type of use in a residential zoning district has a greater setback. And it really, that what we're trying to get at there was for new uses like this that would go into a district such as a residential district to have greater setbacks from those residences or neighbors. Until recently, the applicant had been using portable pop-up canopies to provide shade to patrons. The portable pop-up canopies have had issues with weather, and we're not a permanent solution for the applicant. solution, uh, for the applicant. There were four recommended conditions, uh, with the planning commission's recommendation. One, that the applicant shall contact the city once stakes have been set for the construction of the patio within the setback area. Two, the patio shall be enclosed on the south and west sides. Three, the use shall not be occupied as to create a noise violation in, of section 8.08 of the city code. And then four, the applicant shall pay the cost to record the variance with the brown county recorder's office, and that would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Niceley. If I remember correctly, when we approved, um, the liquor licenses, um, earlier, this was included in part of that as well, um, assuming that we move forward with this.
It's just nice to have a more permanent patio space for them instead of the temporary tent setups. This will be a nice cleanup to the backyard there, so any other discussion? I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the variance request with conditions by Yakka LLC Doing Business, Smiley's Tavern on behalf of Al and Matt Kapitski to allow the construction of an eighteen-foot-wide by thirty-four-foot-long covered patio, one foot from the side property line, as described in the lot, site plan provided with the variance application on property legally described as Lot 7, Block 110, north of Center Street, address 425 North State Street.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I just go over these conditions here. Uh, condition number three, the applicant shall not use the outdoor patio area outside the hours of seven AM to nine PM Monday through Friday, nine AM to nine PM Saturday and Sunday. That was a, a discussion item for the zoning, um, meeting, and does Al have any questions in regards to that? Because his other tent service, he was able to use, he noted that he could use it longer.
The planning commission had rec, they recommended removing that condition from the planning commission, uh, commission's dis, uh, proposed conditions, and rather just let him operate his normal hours, recommended operating his normal hours, but that he cannot be in, um, cannot be in violation of the city's noise ordinance.
Okay.
I, that actually brings up a good point, and I was going to ask a question, if the construction of this will include any kind of, um, noise cap, you know, like, if it's kind of a tin shed, that's going to really echo, but I was wondering if, you know, do they have to kind of propose something, and, I mean, I guess that's up to them, but, um, but something to consider would be, you know, building the structure so that it can absorb some noise. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Item number 5.4, variance request for Lawrence Lolito, 1446 Center Street.
All right, uh, this request by Lawrence Lolito is to allow an attached garage, uh, to allow, an attached garage to be located five feet, six inches from the side property line, as shown on the site plan provided with the variance application on property legally described as Lot 2, the replat of the Highland subdivision with a street address of 1446 Center Street. Uh, the planning commission at its May 26, 2022 meeting unanimously recommended approval of the variance request with conditions. For a bit of an overview, the applicant is proposing to construct a twenty-four-foot-wide by twenty-two-foot-deep two-stall attached garage, uh, to be located five feet, six inches from the east side property line. The required side yard setback in the R1 zoning district is ten feet. There is an existing one-stall attached garage and concrete pad used for residential parking purposes located on the east side of the home, um, and that is proposed to be replaced with this two-stall attached garage. The proposed double-stall attached garage will be placed largely on the existing concrete slab, um, where there is, again, that existing, uh, single-stall garage and slab. Um, in 2013, the Lolitos were approved for a variance to place a carport six feet, six inches from the east side property line. Uh, the proposed location for this new double-stall attached garage is in the same location as the carport, except one foot closer to that east side property line. Uh, to date, that carport had not been constructed. There were two recommended conditions. One was that the applicant shall contact the city once construction stake, stakes have been set for the placement of the double-stall attached garage, and then two, the applicant shall pay the cost to record the variance with the brown county recorder's office, and that concludes the staff report.
Thank you.
And from the planning commission, I was on the planning commission in 2013 when we approved his carport, and we had no, uh, neighbors object then, and when we had the planning meeting, no neighbors objected to this, and we've done this similar with a five-yard setback, or five-foot setback, and this is five foot six, actually. Uh, so with that, I would recommend approval with conditions of variance request by Lawrence Lolito to allow an attached garage to be located five foot six from the side yard, property line, as shown in the site plan, provided with the variance application and property legally described as Lot 2, the replat of Highland subdivision.
Second. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I think this is just a, going to be kind of a common trend where some people that want to reinvest in their home because, you know, the housing shortage, and, you know, everybody has two vehicles and they want to have them inside, and so.
While I'm reading through his report, he cited some good safety concerns as well, and it'll be attached to the house, and so, um, I think it's a good thing. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Item number 5.5, report from Safety Commission concerning parking restrictions in the South Park area.
Thank you, Madam President, city counselors. Um, the request was received at, in the city engineer's office with sightline, uh, safety concerns in the South Park area, particularly, particularly, goodness, during the events at Shell's Brewery, uh, with vehicles parked along the entirety of South Washington Street, South Park Road, 19th and 18th South Streets, um, creating sightline issues. The Safety Commission considered this, uh, request at their June 2 meeting. Uh, there was a lengthy discussion by the commission, and ultimately, the commission recommended to receive the concern, um, and not, uh, and to not, uh, recommend any parking restrictions be implemented in this area. There were concerns by commission members that if, uh, parking was, uh, restricted in this area, it would cause people to park further away from the area, walking, um, on roadway segments that currently do not have sidewalk, um, was the primary concern. Um, so before you today is, uh, you have the options of to, uh, implement these parking restrictions or to, um, receive an order filed, the recommendation from the Safety Commission. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Were there multiple, uh, folks that contacted you in regards to this concern?
I just had one concern brought forth.
One concern?
I'm going to just add, I was the one that brought this to Joe Statheim. Um, I visited, I was doing some work recently in the Junior Pioneer Park area, and some of the neighbors had said that at peak times, it's a very challenging road to try to get towards the brewery and to get to their homes because of the vehicles on both sides, and, and their concerns were, you know, especially with the, the weekends with the music at the brewery, and since the tap room has been a good success and stuff, that there should be some no parking signs, at least on one side of that street, for blind intersections. And I said I would bring it up to the Safety Commission, and they could review it.
Well, I'll provide an example. I live right next to Harmon Park, where there is tons and tons of, um, parking on the streets, um, or in the neighborhood, in the slotted spaces, uh, where sightlines are restricted as well. So, um, I guess my question to the Safety Commission is if we're, if we would take something like this on to restrict it, does it open the door, um, for potential restricted parking in many other parts of the city that experience heavy traffic parking on certain occasions?
It, it may, yep.
Thank you.
Is parking a major problem on, like, Sundays where they do just have the beer garden open? Or does most happen up by the brewery?
They bus them in with the trolley, and then they park outside of the residential neighborhood along 19th and around, uh, the park there at times, you know?
And, Madam President, city counselors, the commission did note that the trolley use and, and things of that nature as well to assist with getting people back into the grounds when, when the interior lots are full and things of that nature.
City engineer, Joe, is that an eighty-foot right-of-way?
Washington Street, yes.
I mean, the...
But the segment through the park is technically just a cartway. There's not dedicated right-of-way or anything like that, so.
In other words, we could enforce closing it.
That could be a possibility as well, correct?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
I'm just wondering if this is something we might want to consider tabling, just for the fact that it's a new beer garden, so there's new people coming to this. I wonder if we need to know a little bit more about the flow of traffic, um, before we start imposing parking restrictions. I'm not for or against this, I just think that we might be a little bit early, um, trying to impose, uh, some conditions. Is something we could put off until, um, fall and take a second, see what the traffic's been like, see what the neighbors are seeing, and make some decisions for next year? That's my...
That would certainly be an option, so it looks like our options would be to potentially table it for more information, um, establish the parking restrictions, or receive the order filed from the Safety Commission and deny the establishment of parking restrictions in the area.
I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to table this until more staff information this fall, bring it back, um, in August, or maybe September sometime, and take a second look at this particular motion.
I'll second that, I support that.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 6.1, request for tax abatement, Southern Minnesota Tooling.
Uh, Dave Schonberg, Community Development Director, um, Madam President, members of the city council, uh, the action that, um, is, we're requesting the city council to take, uh, tonight is to retain the firm of David Drone Associates and prepare the documentation necessary to establish a tax abatement, uh, program for Southern Minnesota Tooling. Um, in your agenda packet, you have a letter from Greg Holm, who serves as president of Southern Minnesota Tooling. This firm is located at 1212 North Front Street, which is, uh, north of Minnesota Valley Testing Labs. There currently is an eight thousand square foot building located, um, on the property, it's on the North Front Street side of the property, and the firm is proposing to construct an addition of ten thousand square feet. Um, Southern Minnesota Tooling is a tool and die shop that's established in 1995. Um, the project will allow the business to create adequate, uh, workspace to house additional machinery, offices, employees, which will allow the business to remain competitive and sought-after in their rapidly evolving industry. Um, the business requests tax increment assistance to help pay for excessive building costs. They are proposing to start construction on the project in the fall of this year. Tax abatement, um, allows the city to rebate a portion of the property tax, uh, back to the property owner when they use it to offset development or redevelopment costs. The city currently has four such, uh, programs in place, and a permitted use of tax abatement is, um, general economic development, um, resulting in an increased, um, tax base. Based on preliminary projections, a maximum assistance amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars is, uh...